Alright, what's up everybody? Chris Johnson here. So, I'm here right now in Starlet City. Yeah, I mean, I'm helping out somebody trying to get in the city council. A person that I believe that's gonna win her race. Jamila Rose. I believe that she's gonna win her race. Charles Barron. You know, I'm here doing, trying to do a clean campaign. Saw her opponent. And he's doing a clean campaign, so there's no issue. You know, today is a great day. And the reason I'm out, I'm doing this live video because I'm going live right now. Today's the day that we vote. You know, you guys need to go out and vote today? I know it's kind of crazy right now. Today, this morning, this morning, guys, I voted for, uh, turquoise asking for city, for civil court judge. You know, it was a tough decision. But I believe that turquoise, you know, could, I believe that she can do a way better job than her opponent. And then I voted for Darlie Mealy for city council. Re-elect Darlie Mealy. Darlie Mealy, I'm gonna keep it real out here, I'm going live right now. I'm going live because I'm busy doing something, helping, helping Jamila out for city council. Trying to get her to win. She has some people with her, you know, we're out here right now trying to do G O T B. I'm here until a certain time, I gotta go somewhere else, but I'm doing G O T B right now for Jamila. The reason why I vote for Darlene, and I'm gonna say this right now, shout out Darlie Mealy. The reason I voted for Darlie Mealy is because she been out here. Like, we had a conversation about this. We, I'm in the forty-second district right now. The forty-first district know about Mealy. The forty-first knows about, it's crazy. But it's good, it's good, it's a good way because the forty-first know about the forty-second, and the forty-second know about the forty-first because we both share Brownsville. They got a little piece, this district has a little piece of Brownsville? What's up victim rights, how's it going? I saw the take you did, it was a great take by the way. I'm out here canvassing for somebody for city council. Yeah, I mean, I hope Christie wins her race up in the thirteenth. I think she will win this. She backed by the machine. So, she will win, she'll win her race. But go back to Darlie Mealy. Darlie Mealy, she been out here for the people since, since, since like she started running for office. She started being city council. She had three terms, she got term limited. And then she took a four-year break. And then she took the thing, I'm just gonna, she's gonna run for the hell of it. And she ran against a, uh, an incumbent that wasn't out there for the district. I live in my, I lived in my district for thirty-two years, so people can't say that. I don't know what I'm talking about. I know what I was talking about with the whole forty-first district race in, um, in two thousand twenty-one. Alika wasn't out there for the, for the people. She wasn't, thank you, thank you, I appreciate it, thank you so much. Yeah, I'm out here in the forty-second district, um, Starlet City at this point, helping out this person for city council. Jamila Rose, elect Jamila Rose, she'll run for city council right now. So, like Darlie Mealy was out here for the people. Up more than anybody else. Like, she was been out here. Alika was nowhere to be found. Alika didn't even do a lot of things for constituents, especially with constituent services. She wasn't even out here for the people. So, when she ran, and I explained to some people this morning, I was like, the only reason Darlie pulled it up because she ran one-on-one against Alika. Now, if they ran about four people in that race, Darlene would have had one. Because they would have put some people in the same race, had the same ideologies as Darlene with that, oh, I didn't like the Alika shit. And she would have won. Alika would have probably pulled over the margin over Darlene. But Darlene ran a one-on-one, Darlene had the base. And she did, and she defeated, um, she defeated Alika. So, Alika got voted out. Now she worked for the government. That means she had government job now, working for Hut. So, now, the forty-first district right now, I'm explaining right now the whole forty-first with, uh, with, um, what's her name? Um, Isis. Uh, to be real, Isis, I met her a few times, I think she's a good person. But she, she's not out here for the district. She wasn't out here for the district. Nobody know who she, nobody knew who she was. A lot of people saying that, yeah, much as people might have things about Mealy, but people didn't know who Isis was. There's a few races right now, uh, I, I know about this, I'm helping out her, uh, Jamila Rose for city council. You know, I'm doing this right now at the same time. But with Isis, I think she ran too late. I'm not trying to say she's a bad person, it's just the thing with vocal turned me off. When she had things about vocal, she didn't even say a thing about vocal New York, it turned me off. That's the thing about Isis. Now, going back to, it turned me off with Isis, the whole vocal New York endorsement. I think she didn't reject it, but I think she took it. Because she need everything, she need every endorsement as possible to go against the incumbent. And I'm not knocking that down. No one's knocking that down. Now, with, like I said, Isis, she didn't put her name out there, and she should have ran like a year early. Or put her name out in twenty-twenty-one, or, or late twenty-twenty-one, say, hey, I'm out in the district, trying to do things in the district. And then she announced her campaign twenty-twenty, um, twenty-twenty-two. It'd be, she had a better chance of having that name recognition over Mealy. But she came too late. A lot of people not gonna trust her. And it's understandable. So, she's not gonna get a lot of people votes. So, Mealy's gonna mostly close off this tonight at nine o'clock. We'll be looking at this, wait one second, me lock over. Alright, sorry about that, I was, I was taking a call with somebody. So, I'm in, I'm Instagram live, let me go a little first so people see me. People say, oh, they can't see me, but I understand that, but I'm taking calls. I pick up my phone, heads up everybody, I pick up my phone. Let me put this right here. So, yeah, so, um, still during election day canvassing for Jamila Rose, you right here, elect Jamila Rose. So, still holding, I gotta hold a sign, make sure people I'm seeing. This, this, uh, this, uh, tech company holding, blocking me. Hilarious, right? But it's okay, I'm not mad at all. So, going back to what I said before. So, vote for Jamila Rose, so, as I said before about Isis, she wasn't really out there in the district. And I'm not saying I don't trust her, I just say it just like, it just doesn't feel well to vote for somebody like that in my district. And I have no issue with Darlene, I told her in two thousand twenty-one when I ran, when she ran for city council against Alika, I said, look, I understand what happened, I, I'm not mad at how you did your thing in the district. Because the state assembly member in my district is way worse. Way worse than, way worse than the, uh, um, than she ever could be. Because the state assembly member is introducing bills and voting on bills and champion bills and cheerleading for bills that, like Latrice Walker, that's my district, I'm in district fifty-five. I'm in district fifty-five, C D forty-one, um, congressional district number nine, and I'm in, uh, what's the other district again? Um, um, state senate number twenty, that's my, so, I'm in eighty fifty-five. People understand this. Walker championed for a lot of bills that wasn't, that should have been championed at all. Like bail reform and clean slate and, and it's a lot of stupid ass shit that, um, Walker has pushed in the state of New York. That, hey, what's up, brother? She's out, she's over in the front. She's out in the deep front, she's always in the front, front. You know, like you walk on the, on the highway, it's right in the front. All the way in the front, by the way, you can't miss her. She wearing all pink. Yeah.
There's a wrestler in there?
Yeah, I think he is a wrestler, yeah. So, yeah, um, yeah, so I'm trying to help out her campaign. So, yeah, going back to it, so going back to this, um, yeah, she, you know, like, it just like Walker pushed a lot of things that make, that'll make me look like a good person. But Mealy is a great person. But Walker is like, I think she's like the worst elected official in, in my district, in the whole fucking zone. Because C D forty-one technically mainly aligns with eighty fifty-five. But Walker is like the worst, she's like a, like a fucking villain. Now, I'm gonna break this down right now, people say, well, you should run for state assembly. I'm like, well, I, I will do it, but I have to get in my district before I run for state assembly. I have to get in it like at least a year or two years early before I start to run for a seat because I'll be running too late. I, I can't run where, in a district where majority of the, the people that vote in the district are at age. Like, they are like over forty-five, like fifty years old, because they're not gonna trust a young person like me, I'm too young. Right, I'm thirty-two. They like fifty-five. And it's just what it is. I'm not gonna get, I can't, I can't convince them otherwise. I really can't force them to vote for me where they don't really trust me that much. So, I, I wanna earn the people's trust in my district first. People that want to, that if I was to run, I want to earn their trust. Disrespectful people. You gotta be careful. I respect women because God don't like ugly. I mean, God hate ugly. I mean, you never do that shit, disrespect a woman like that, it doesn't matter, like, she was in the wave. She's old, she, I'm not trying to say in a bad way, but she, she, she's old, she can't mobilize. Like, I could mobilize, he could mobilize, you don't trust when he move. Respectful, real disrespectful. Um, but like I said before, you know, um, I gotta get in the district first. I gotta get my name in there, I gotta get the trust of the people, especially attack the voter base before I wanna run. Because I want people to, I, I, I want people to trust me, that's the thing. I don't want to run where I'm getting all these endorsements and people can't trust me. I, I rather, I feel, I feel ugly about that. People say, I feel real ugly, real ugly about that. So, that's why I say vote for Isis. I mean, vote for, I mean, sorry about that, I mean, vote for Mealy. Don't vote for Isis, vote for Darlie Mealy. Sorry about that, why I say vote for Isis? Uh, I said, don't vote for, don't vote for Isis, vote for Darlie Mealy. Because her name is out there, her name is well-known and people trust her, I trust her. Way better than, way better than Alika. That's the thing. So, going back forward to other races that I wanna talk about. You know, vote for, vote for Jamila, holding a sign right now, vote for Jamila, going back to, uh, so going back to before, like recommendation for city council. Uh, I'm gonna tag my boy Phantom Elf in this shit, I mean, I'm tagging my boy right now. Because a lot of people running. I'm tagging my boy Phantom Elf, T J L seven. Tell him to watch this shit. Alright, so I tagged my boy DJ L seven, tell him to watch this, we can get a chance to watch this shit. I'm gonna tag him in the video. You know, you put DJ, shout out my boy DJ L seven, we do shows every Sunday, every Sunday, every Sunday. And I'm gonna tell people this right now. He's, he's co-sign Jennifer Gutierrez. So, you know, I'm a co-sign, I'm a co-sign Jennifer Gutierrez cuz of DJ. And I have no issue with Jennifer Gutierrez. The only issue I have with Jennifer Gutierrez, I'm gonna keep it real with Jennifer Gutierrez, is the issue I have with Jennifer Gutierrez is, is like, here's the thing. Like, with Jennifer, she's a mother. She's an older mother, she's like a, a brand new mother, she has a top, she has like an infant, right? She has an infant. And the thing about is, I understand you're part of progressive caucus, right? Jennifer's part of progressive caucus, and I'll vote for her, and I'll tell this one-on-one. I understand you're part of progressive caucus, right? I understand you want bills to be introduced, you want the automatic support because you need sponsors to get it to the floor and to get it, get it introduced into the floor. And you want the bill to pass, and hopefully on a certain majority so the mayor can veto it. But even if he could veto it, even if he veto it, you know, but he really can't veto it, right? Because that's super majority, you can't veto, it's a law. So, still holding a sign for Jamila. So, going back to the whole thing about Jennifer Gutierrez, Jennifer is, there's times as elected official, because, and I know this is coming from Sandy Nurse, councilwoman Sandy Nurse. This all comes from councilwoman Sandy Nurse. She's trying to really influence in Jennifer's policy and Jennifer's decision-making. Now, I know her things about between me and Sandy Nurse. But you gotta understand that Sandy Nurse came from a nonprofit background. She, she's, she was a, a nonprofit CEO of BK Rock that do composting. Now, Jennifer came from a governmental background. She was the chief of staff to now Brooklyn Borough President Antonio Reynoso. Right? Now, chief of staff, hey, hey, Mazzy, how's it going? Uh, I love what you do. I mean, when it's time, I'll, I'll knock doors for you in Long Island. You know, like I said, go back to Jennifer, go back to Jennifer Gutierrez. Now, you're part of progressive caucus, like, we all know Sandy's control of your speeches. We all know control, we know Sandy is, uh, Sandy is, um, trying to influence what you do. Now, like I said before, again, Sandy is coming from a governmental, uh, Sandy, you coming from governmental background. You was the chief of staff to Antonio Reynoso. Right? Straight facts. You coming from the background of Antonio Reynoso, you was the chief of staff and Antonio made the seat up for you. He did, he purposely had that seat for you when he left to run for Brooklyn Borough President. You was gonna become his successor, and no one's, I'm not here to knock that down, you deserved it. Now, you have a minor, you have an infant. You have an infant. Real shit, you have an infant. With intro six thirty-two, you put your name on that, you, you, you champion that bill. You're not championing, but you're part of the bill. I think it's stupid for you to co-sign that bill, to be part of that bill because you have an infant. And like I said, I'll say it again, how, how would it feel that a pedophile like Douglas Powell? Or rapist? Or stalker? Or, or a pervert that like, like little kids? Could, could live next to your kid because a landlord or real estate broker or management company or real estate agent can't background check that motherfucker? And that's the one thing I, I'm gonna ask Jennifer one day in public or one-on-one, like, how, you're a mother. How would you feel if a pedophile could live next to your, live next to your kid? And they, and they do, they harm your kid? But the law right now saying that these guys can't live next to the kid, they can't live next to your fucking kids. But you change the law, make it like they can live next to your kids, but how would you feel if they did that to you? How would you feel if the law gets, the law gets passed and it comes law? And somebody live next to your child and they harm your child because they allowed to because the landlord can't harm your kid? The landlord can't, uh, the landlord can't back, can't reject his application because of criminal background? Or sex offender status? How you feel? And that's the one thing out of accidents, that's the one thing I have an issue with, that's the one thing that, that bothers me about her. Is like, you are allowing Sandy Nurse to influence what the fuck you do in the city council? And I know this shit, I know this for a nutshell. You supposed to be influenced of her shit. You have more experience as a governmental and government than her. Like I said, Sandy was nothing but a fucking nonprofit CEO. She nothing but a nod that was getting government money from Reynoso. You were, you were working for Reynoso, you know more about governmental affairs than she does. You know about how the constituent, she does. That's my issue with Jennifer, that's my little, my, my little pet peeve. But I don't have no issue with other things she do in the district. So, I'm gonna vote out, if I say I recommend Jennifer Gutierrez for city council. That's the only thing I have an issue with, I'm gonna, I have to check about that, I'm gonna talk about that, cuz that's crazy. You're a new mother, you, you co-sign the bullshit cuz of Sandy Nurse? We all know Sandy Nurse doing that, we all know Sandy Nurse is letting you, like, influence your shit in the city council, we all know that. And DJ, you gotta understand that Sandy Nurse influenced that, that girl's policies in city council. She's, she's fucking go along with, oh, vote for, vote for the Andrew hatred, vote against the, uh, abstain from the Andrew hatred bill. Abstain from the Andrew hatred bill. How the fuck you gonna abstain? Oh, you live in a district where the, 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 it's a heavily populated Jewish community that lives in that district. Come on, girl, we all know that Sandy told you to abstain from that bill. Abstain, don't vote no, abstain, so just don't vote. You should have voted yes. You live in a highly, heavily Jewish district, you should have voted yes, Jennifer, that's the thing. But, and I'm saying DJ, you're a constituent of her, and I, I, I respect you, bro, and I love you, I love you, bro. So, I'll vote, I'll, I'll endorse, I'll co-sign Jennifer Gutierrez for another term city council. But a certain, I gotta check up, is the Andrew hatred thing, intro six thirty-two, that's the only two thing I'm gonna check up, I'm gonna check her on. Now, I think it's, they see control with technology, but I'm not a big fan of technology. So, I can't really check on, on technology cuz I'm not, I don't, I don't really give a fuck about technology that much. I care about public safety, transportation, and criminal justice, that's my three core things in, in the committees for city council. Although I can't check on like housing or that weird shit cuz I don't give a, I really just don't have that thing about it. I care about housing, I care about N Y C, I care about the stuff, but it's not my, it's not my, not my specialty. And I care about the people that lives in N Y C, and I look care about people in these, these, uh, hello, vote for Jamila Rose, uh, these, these districts. I care. But that's not my niche, I can't really go to these committees and say shit, but it's not right. It's not fair, it's, it's dirty to me, I feel dirty about that. There's certain people that people, like, yo, how about you go speak at this committee here? I'm not going out there to speak at that where I don't know what they really think about it, cuz it's, it's, it's just, it's just wrong. So, I can't speak about that, N Y C, I, I can't, I support people from N Y C. I, I really want people to liberate apartments and even the most gentrification that's going on, but I can't speak at this stuff. But going to Jennifer Gutierrez, I, I can't really, um, you know what I mean, I had to check on like the whole like intro six thirty-two shit. And, um, and, and the whole Andrew hate, and, and Sandy Nurse, that shit is crazy, man, like, don't let Sandy, Jennifer, don't let Sandy Nurse influence your, your, your policies, this city council, because if she, if she fucking gets, let's say she get voted out, she'll go back, she'll go back to being at Mayday Space or fucking BK Rock, she'll go back to that. While, while, uh, you can't, while you, you really can't. You, you use your government job like, I mean, you don't wanna work at the hospital with government affairs. Sandy has shit to fall back on. Sandy, Sandy was good before she ran for city council. She didn't, she didn't need to run for city council, she just ran because, like, she just ran because she wanted to take out Eric Dillon for state assembly. That would happen Sandy. Sandy ran for state assembly, right? This is the fact about Sandy Nurse. Sandy ran for state assembly, was going for state assembly twenty nineteen against, against Eric Dillon. Then Sandy saw the opening for city council with, when, um, Rafael Espino resigned for city council to go work for Freelancers Union. Then she ran for city, she dropped the state assembly campaign, ran for city council, ran for city council. She got knocked off the ballot because of Dharma Diaz's fuck shit, and I'm not, and it's fucked up that it happened. But she got knocked off the ballot cuz of her fuck shit. Vote for Jamila Rose. So, then, then, she couldn't run because she got knocked off the ballot. Dharma Diaz came to councilman on like default, which is a fucked up default. And then Sandy ran for city council in twenty twenty-one, uh, the old, twenty twenty-one election. People, people didn't like what Dharma was doing, and then now Sandy Nurse won on a landslide, and people said, I helped Sandy Nurse get in city council. I helped her get in city council. People don't get this shit, I helped her get in city council. And then she, and then she, uh, won on a, on a margin because I told her at a, at a, at a, at an event when she was running the general, I said that I knew you was gonna win, you deserved to win that seat, and she said, thank you. So, it just, what the fuck it is? So, like I said, Jennifer, don't let Sandy influence what you're doing. She really wouldn't become a state assembly member, she don't wanna be in city council, she could, she could really care less about the city council seat. She can't do what she really wanna do in city council. She wanna go state assembly. But if all that fell, she'll go after her little nonprofit, BK Rock, and get some government money for more elected officials. And those foundations. So, Jennifer, don't let Sandy Nurse influence what you do in the city council. You're your own woman. You your own damn woman. You your own woman. You gotta stand on your own fucking shit, Jennifer. And DJ, I hope you tag Jennifer in this video, or somebody, if they see this video, tag Jennifer Gutierrez in the Jennifer NYC or the councilman's website, or tag who the fuck you wanna tag, because this is getting ridiculous. And if one day I might go to a fucking office and tell her this shit, don't let fucking Sandy Nurse influence your goddamn policy in the city council. Because this is getting, this, it's getting real disgusting. Real disgusting, Jennifer. But I'm, I'm, I'll vote for you by the way you district, and I'll, I'll totally vote for you. And I really would. That's the thing. Now, going forward to other races, um, I'm gonna talk about this race right now, the, um, the twenty-third race between Linda Lee, Rubiah Ramon, and Rubiah Ramon, and, um, Rubiah Ramon, and, um, Steve Behar. I'll throw my vote to Linda Lee. You know why? Because Linda is out there, Linda is quiet. Um, Linda, I, I have my thing with Linda, and I know what's going on. But, um, I don't hate her at all because I know what's going on, and I know what's really influencing that shit. Who really influencing, who's influencing that, that, that heat to me? With me and Linda, and I never talk shit about Linda ever. But I'll, I'll help Linda, I'll say vote for Linda, Linda Lee for city council. Because she, she needs, she needs the support, she needs the support, and I'm not knocking her down. But I wish that Linda Lee could talk my boy DJ L seven, I wish that Linda could give this nigga the attention. I hope she could. I hope that she could give, uh, my boy DJ L the attention, cuz he's Korean, and she's, she's Korean. And I think Koreans should be working together, the Asians work together, just like the Jews work together, the blacks work together, the Latin, the Dominican work together, the, the Puerto Ricans, the Panamanians, the Koreans be working together. And that's the thing. So, Linda, you, you, I'll, I'll support you, I'll co-sign your shit. But you need to fucking, you need to, um, you need to, um, like talk my boy DJ, man, cuz it's getting crazy. So, another race I wanna talk about is throwaway Lynn Shoeman, I love her, Lynn Shoeman, vote for Lynn Shoeman. She deserves your vote too. Please vote for Lynn Shoeman, twenty-ninth district, don't vote for anybody else. The twenty, the nineteenth district, Chris Bay, vote for Chris Bay, that's it. The thirteenth district, vote for my homegirl, Marjorie Valesquez. Vote for Marjorie on, on Democratic line, and vote for Chrissy Matamato on the Republican line. Now, the first district, this might be, this might be controversial, but I don't care. Vote for Susan Lee, vote ranked Susan number one. Rank Susan number one, and rank Ursula number two. And I'm gonna tell why about Susan Lee, because Susan actually, Susan, Susan wanna take out Chris. And I wanna take out Chris too, because Chris, Chris is fucking up, man. I don't know, I'm Dominican, he Dominican, and I'm gonna say this as a, of the one Dominican dude to another Dominican dude, Chris, you fucked up, bro. You fucked up heavy, my nigga, you fucked up heavy, bro. Because it's a lot of things you did, I'm like, yo, bro, like, what the fuck you doing? Like, you flip-flopping on some shit about the police, but yo, pick a side, man. If you, if you for defund the police, defund the police. If you for refund the cops, refund the cops. But don't go one meeting and say, well, defund the police, and then go next meeting, Jay, don't defund the police. Stop flip-flopping, my nigga, but you fucked up, bro. But if you win, it's just what it is, but you lose, you deserve to fucking lose, my nigga. So, that's the thing. So, vote for Susan Lee number one, and vote for Ursula Jung number two. Because they, it doesn't matter, but I'll say vote for Ursula number one, or vote for Susan number two. Because it doesn't matter, just don't vote for Chris Marte. From one Dominican brother to another, from one Dominican, don't vote Chris Marte, don't vote for that nigga. Now, the ninth race, the number nine race, I'm gonna talk about this right now, number nine, number nine race, I'll say vote for Al Taylor. Vote for Al Taylor in Harlem. Because Al, I love Al, Al's my dude, Al's my guy, Al's clergy. So, we need clergy back in the city council because he could check certain things about what some of you guys ain't doing and what these gals ain't doing. Especially with coming like the LGBT stuff, I'm not, I'm not anti, but there's certain things like they just pushing crazy, you just can't have, you just can't really have. So, we need Al in the city council, man. Inez is real estate queen, real estate developer queen. And, um, real estate developer queen. And, uh, what's her name? And, uh, and his name, Yusuf? He's nowhere to be found. Yusuf just wanna run, he thought he could take out Chris, whatever, you know what I mean, so vote for Al Taylor number nine. On the number two race, I'm staying out of that, I love Carlina, Carlina is my girl. So, I'm staying out of that race, I love Carlina, she's my girl. Uh, I, I love her, I love what she does, she likes to, she wanna serve. I understand about the tree situation, but, but y'all wanna vote for Ally, vote for Ally. Y'all wanna vote for Carlina, vote for Carlina, I'm staying out of number two. I'm not, I'm not sticking that, I'm not putting my hand in that race. The number, the number, um, I'm still voting for Jamila Rose, you see, I'm still voting for Jamila. So, for number, I did two, I did one, I did nine, number ten, Carmen De La Rosa. Shout out to Carmen, my Dominican sister, vote for Carmen De La Rosa, Carmen De La Rosa is Carmen De La Rosa. I had to tell someone, like, yo, don't fuck with Carmen, man, Carmen, Carmen is gonna be the next one, be the king, the queen of, the queen of Washington Heights, man, the queen of Enwood. Don't fuck with Carmen De La Rosa, man. I try my best to not fuck with her, man, I, I like to not get on bad, on a bad side. Cuz I'm Dominican, let me get this lady away, you know what I mean, let's just, vote for Jamila Rose. You see, uh, not to get on Carmen's bad side, I try my best not to. Because she, she will be the queen of Washington Heights after the queen of Washington Heights. Let me put my, I'm a, I'm a boy, Julie, so he can watch this later on. Tag my boy Seguro from New York, he's running. So, I'm tagging my boy Seguro, she, he's running for city, he's running for, uh, what is it, county committee? Julian's running for county committee, shout out Julian Seguro, that's my boy, he's running for county committee. He's running for county committee. So, hello. He's running for county committee. And I want you to vote for the guy, that's my boy, I want you to vote for him, please. But I'm telling Julia right now, like Carmen De La Rosa, I know that's not your district, Sean Bray is, John Bray, my, that's my guy, I know that's your, that's, but you live in the same, you live in the same congressional district as like Carmen De La Rosa, right? Espaillat. But when Espaillat leaves the Congress, I'm, I'm, this is my thing, I'm talking about Carmen De La Rosa. When Espaillat leaves Congress, or he passes, or he transitions to the athlete, like he passes away. Carmen De La Rosa will be the congressperson of the, of the, of the, of the thirteenth district, she will be congressman, congresswoman. She will be in Congress, she will be the queen of the thirteenth district, she will be the queen of, of Enwood and Washington Heights. I swear to God, that's my thing. So, I'm not, I don't, I don't wanna get on a bad side, I can't fuck, I don't wanna fuck with the next queen of, of politics. But she already, she's already good for it, I love Carmen. Carmen's a girl. So, I don't wanna get on a bad side, I don't wanna get on a bad side, so that's the thing. So, bank on that, facts. So, going forward, I did a tenth, I did a ninth, I did the, uh, the, the second, I did the first. Now, what else is going on? Um, up in the Bronx, let's go to the Bronx, sorry about that, no Staten Island races, guys, no Staten Island races. In the Bronx, vote for Parina Sanchez. Parina Sanchez deserves your vote in the fourteenth. I'm gonna break this down right now about her opponent. Her opponent is immature. Her name is Rachel Bradshaw Miller. I think Bradshaw, her, her I think Bradshaw, her, her opponent is real, her opponent is real immature. Her opponent did a lot of things, I'm like, I, I can't, I can't help her, I wouldn't knock, I wouldn't go to her district and knock on doors for Rachel. Because she's real immature. She was screaming at council members at a rally, I'm like, yo, man, this isn't professional. Because you don't get your way, you gonna scream at, you gonna scream at your colleagues? I, I can't vote for that. So vote for Parina Sanchez for the fourteen district. Um, the twelfth, I gotta get to my boy Kevin Riley. Shout out to Kevin Riley, Kevin Riley my nigga, I love Kevin Riley, Kevin Riley my homeboy. I love Kevin Riley, with, as a person, not, not sexually. But I love Kevin Riley. So vote for Kevin Riley for twelve, for the twelfth district. Duh. So that's it. I mean, and I think in Brooklyn, we go out to Brooklyn, I did Jennifer, I did, I did my district, I did, I'm, I'm supporting Jamila, I say let Jamila roll for city council. Uh, forty second district, but I have my, I give my love to Chris, Chris Banks too, he's a good, he's a black man. I'm not gonna knock down a black, I'm talking about Chris Banks. I'm not gonna knock down a, I'm supporting Jamila, but I'm never gonna knock down a black man running for city council. I will never do that, he's a black man running, he's running a clean campaign. Today he is, I told him on the live, I told him early, the early live, hello, vote for Jamila for city council. So don't, just please run a clean campaign. Because we're trying to both get rid of Chris, uh, me, um, Charles Baron. I don't like Charles, Charles is just saying things that people like, he say things that. People wanna hear, but they, what they don't need to hear, she, so that's the thing about Charles Baron, so. But you gotta, we gotta run a clean campaign in this district, I'm in district forty two, Starlight City right here. We have to, we run, I'm in this district, supporting Jamila Rose, Starlight City, like I said. We have to run a clean campaign, we have to play fair. We have to be positive. Because we all on this thing, we wanna do is get rid of Charles Baron. So that's what I'm saying, just run a clean campaign. And this is message to every other campaign out here, run a clean campaign. Please run a clean campaign. Because if we, we don't, then God's gonna strike us back for that. So run a clean campaign, don't even rip down signs, don't need to be disparaging another black woman or Latino woman or, or vice versa. Disparaging a black man running for city council, there's no need to. That's the thing. So going back forward, I did a forty two, forty first. Um, I think, I think that's really, that's only running, he's this year, right? Except for the general, the general is general. The forty third, vote for Susan Wong. Because Stanley, Stan, I think Stanley just wanna flip the vote against Susan to give a Wiley Chan win. And Wiley Chan, I'm gonna go out this old, Wiley Chan, first of all, Wiley Chan is backed by, Wiley Chan is ran, is backed by Justin Brandon. That's a big red flag. Then she's backed by Andrew Gondaris, that's a big red flag too. Then she's backed by Peter Abbott Jr., third red flag. Then she's backed by Ivan Chu. The biggest, one of the biggest red flag, Ivan Chu is an AstroTurf artificial state senator. They designed the seventeen, new, the new state senate, number seventeen district just for Ivan Chu. The number seventeen district for state senate is an all majority AAPI district and that was designed for Ivan Chu. So that's a big red flag. A lot of the endorsements for Ivan was handed by Justin Brandon and Andrew Gondaris. So that's the two, like I said about endorsements, guys, endorsements in general. Endorsements are most of the time handed, not earned. They're ran by people in high places and majority of the time, they don't even interview candidates for getting these endorsements. So you have to be real careful, real careful of people that get, that get endorsed by the unions. Because unions are heavily influenced by the county committees and certain donors. And what happens with unions and the political directors is like, well, if you don't, and elected officials, let's say like, Justin Brandon. Funds the unions, he gives money to the union committees, like that. He will tell the unions like, yo, if you don't endorse my candidate, I'm gonna drop funding, I'm gonna, I'm gonna block all funding for your, your non, for your organization. So they don't wanna lose their money, so you know what, they budget and endorse the person that Justin wanted to endorse. Fucking disgusting, it's not fair, but it's a fucked up process. Real messed up process. So that's what's going on with, that's what's going on with Wiley Chan, so all that stuff is handed to her, it was all WAU, it's all handed to Wiley Chan, it's all artificial. So vote for Susan Wong and the, um, vote for Susan in the Democratic, in the, um. In the, um, Democratic primary, please. Because we can't have a Wiley Chan win, because if we have Wiley Chan, it's Ivan Chu two point oh. And all Wiley Chan's gonna do is carry water for, all Wiley Chan's gonna do is carry water for Justin Brandon's bitch ass. And I'm gonna say this right now, hole in the post with, fuck Justin Brandon, fuck that nigga, fuck that, fuck that guy. Fuck Justin Brandon and fuck Andrew Gondaris too, fuck those two. Right? Now, in the forty, in, in the Republican line, I'll just tell people to stay neutral. But Vito is a good guy, Vito has a great heart. Vito, uh, I think Vito, with Vito, Vito Labella. Vito, um, learnt the hard way when you wanna mingle with Brooklyn Democratic Party. But then you wanna change to the Republican Party just to, you know, because you felt your views changed. Now, with Vito and the one thing about Vito is happens to a lot of people. Where you believe in one thing at one year and the next year you might have a change of heart and then you might have a change of views. But what you never do unless you delete your content is your past, right? It's like last year, I supported Justin Brandon in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty one. But shit happened this year that I was so disgusted by Justin Brandon and things changed up and I said, I can't mess with Justin Brandon anymore. So it was, it's, I can't, one thing I can't escape is my past, yeah, I support Justin Brandon before, I supported Catalina Cruz before. Until she fucked up with supporting Juan Undillo, I can't really mess with her like that no more. I hope we can, we can bend, we can mend the, but, cause of, cause of Juan, I can't fuck with her no more. I don't hate Catalina Cruz, people, people like, whoa, you hate, I don't hate motherfuckers. I don't hate Catalina Cruz, I don't hate Justin Brandon. I don't hate Sandy Nurse, I don't hate none of these motherfuckers, because if you kinda criticize them on Twitter and on Facebook and, and social media, doesn't mean I hate them. I don't hate somebody. I, I don't, like I said, I, I explained it, I don't hate another human being. Hate is a evil word. Hate is a disgusting word, hate is a wicked word. When you hate somebody, that's a bad thing to have in your heart because hatred usually comes from mental illness. It always concern that little mental illness, so, and I'm a big hurt, big proponent of mental illness. Mental illness outreach and mental health. So to have hatred in my heart for somebody because of another person or some shit they did is crazy. It's crazy. I understand if you been molested. Or you've been fucked over by somebody, you've been betrayed or you, something personally happened to you. But majority of fucking shit I have, is polit, is political. It's not like the nigga did some weird shit to me, nah, it's nothing. So I don't have hatred for motherfuckers. Big difference, so let's get that out the, out the way. I don't have a hatred for a person, another human being like that, it's not me, that's my feeling. So going forward, the forty seven district, vote for Ari Kagan or Anna, Anna de Bloch before us, right? Vote for Anna or vote for, vote for Anna. Or vote for, vote for Anna or vote for Ari. And I'm gonna tell you, you're not voting for Avery Piarro, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna explain why. And I'm gonna break this down right now, I'm gonna put this on YouTube, put this on Facebook and I, I'll explain why I don't, I say don't vote for Avery. Is because, right, his campaign manager's name is Nicholas Chambers, this campaign manager, right? Me and Nicholas had a bad falling out. Anyone know where I had a bad falling out for? We had a bad falling out because of Tina Forte from last year, right? So what happened last year was Avery, no, not Avery, Desi, uh, Nicholas was a campaign manager, but Desi Quela. Desi Quela was backed by the Bronx Conservative Party to run against AOC in the, in the general election. Not only Desi Quela had the, the, the backing of the, the Bronx Democratic Party, I mean, the Bronx Republican Party. He had backing from the, the New York State Young Republicans, he got backed by the machine, let's, let's keep, let's keep it, cause I'm, I'm running on short, short time. He's running on, he's running on short time, he's running on, he's running by the machine. So I decided to back Tina Forte because Tina Forte was out there for the people since twenty twenty. During the pandemic, during the, during the height of the pandemic, she was out there in twenty twenty, she was out there before she won the rumble seat for, for Congress. So I been knew to Tina, I was, I was in my house because of the pandemic. I was working and I didn't wanna risk myself getting in the shit because motherfuckers were spreading all over the goddamn city. There was certain rallies, people was like a hundred people, super spreading, I'm not gonna fucking go a super spreader rally and risk getting in shit and then, hey, what's up? And then, and then, um, give it to my family, I, I can't do that. So prevent that happening, guys, I'm still Starlight City, prevent that happening. I said I'm not going out there to donate these campaigns, gave nine thousand to these campaigns from home while I was working. Cause I protect myself and protect my family, so I'm not gonna go out, cover these events. Oh wait, one second, me, me call him, pause. Alright, so yeah, uh, she's, uh, she's in the front, I think she's the first one. In the front, front, you should call her. Yeah, I think she really, she probably campaigning around all places, other, other locations, ask her where she at, ask her locations. Yeah, no problem, brother, appreciate it. So yeah, I was helping out somebody, they trying to help her out, getting, Gary, I tried to help out getting city council, city council, what's up, Walt? Todd, what's up, Taj, how you doing? Trying to get, she trying to get city council, so I mean, we trying to help her out. So going back forward, um, I'll say before I got interrupted, uh. Yeah, the forty, the forty, like I said, I don't hate somebody. So the forty seven district, like I said, don't vote for Avery, I said, go back to Tina Forte. Now, what happened with Nikki and Tina, me and this guy, people Tina Forte, he blocked me on Twitter, he blocked me on Facebook. Dean, despair is a fucking guy, I just fucking told him not backing, I'm not backing your boy Quela for fucking, Tina was out there for everything. Before the pandemic, during the pandemic and after the pandemic, she was out there, she was helping everybody, what's up Taj? She was helping everybody out in city council. She helped everybody out, everybody out, city council. Everybody, I mean, that's like, helped everybody out when the, during the pandemic, she was out there for the people. So what happened with, with Tina, with, with this guy Nicholas, he ran Desi against Tina. So I told, I was like, I'm back to Tina with, with Desi. So I was like, whatever, so Tina beat it, Desi, on a landslide in, in a Republican, Republican primary. So a week later, like I put, like, two, three days later, Nikki sent me, um, somebody that was close to Nick sent me some, um. Files and documents about Tina's son. I was like, okay, that's her son, her son got some shit. Everybody getting, people getting shit all day, I'm in your, speaking of, speaking of ass, fucking city, we gotta get some votes here. We gotta get, yeah, I'm trying to get this girl, there's a lot of people out here, there's a lot of million, over a million people in this district. Coming here and stuff like that, they live in New York City, in Brooklyn. Okay? People get locked up every day, people get arrested, people get, people get arrested, right, people get arrested for drugs. It happens, okay? Then, he was like, he was trying to make it like, well, she shouldn't be in city, she shouldn't be in Congress. Tina should be in Congress because, then he told, then he sent me it again, he sent me, somebody sent me it, then he sent me it. Hello? So he said, so he was like, oh, Tina shouldn't been in Congress because her son got locked up for some bullshit, I'm like, well, first of all. I'm like, well, first of all, Tina is the best thing that happened to the, to the, to the whole damn Republican Party since fucking, uh, since, uh. Uh, Nick, Nicole May Takis, I'm not gonna fucking drop her, I'm not gonna fucking stop support because her son got convicted of some bullshit. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna hate Tina because of what her, her family member did, that's stupid. She's an own person, her son's an own person, right? It was just, it was just like, I told him, like, look, I'm not gonna do that, that's fucking wrong, that's disgusting, because that's like, that's like me. It was in twenty twenty two, just remember this, right? These certain elected officials, they fuck with me as much as, like, I know saying shit about me, say shit about me. You know why? Because I'm an own person, right? I fuck with people that might be controversial, but am I a bad guy because I hang out with somebody that, no, stupid. So I told him, I said, look, I'm not gonna fucking, I'm not gonna drop my support for Tina for fucking Desi, when Desi running conservative line, he know he gonna win shit. You got, you guys just wanna make eleven million dollars because what happened with John Cummings when he ran the AOC. John Cummings got backed by both the Conservative Party and the Republican Party. He got, he made eleven million dollars for, for Congress versus AOC still lost. But Nicholas was banking on that, making that same amount of money too, you know why? Because as a campaign manager, he could probably take mostly all that shit. He'll be a millionaire with that fucking crap. So Nicholas knew what he was doing. And I told him, I said, bro, I'm not supporting your, I'm not supporting that bullshit, he got so upset, he said, oh, thank you, I hope, you know, hello. He blocked me on, on Facebook, he blocked me on Facebook, he blocked me on Instagram, he blocked me on Twitter. Because of, because we had a falling out because of Tina Forte, because I'm not gonna fucking hate Tina Forte. And I'm not gonna drop Tina Forte because of what her son did, I'm not gonna fucking do that, that's stupid. So I told him that. So don't vote fucking Avery Piarro, don't vote for that clown, don't vote for that little weirdo. So vote for Anna, vote for, um, vote for Anna and vote for, um, vote for Anna. And vote for Ari Kagan, you have to. Now going forward, there's two races that I want to talk about, there's, uh, the Bronx, Bronx, the Bronx DA race. Bronx DA race and the Queens DA race. Now for the Bronx, I'll tell people vote for Cohen, don't vote for Clark. Anybody other than Clark, Clark did too much damage to the Bronx. But the problem with the Bronx, what's up, Cozy, how's it going? Hope you out there canvassing for your candidates, you know what I mean, I mean, what's up, Cozy, what's up? Um, so with, what's his guy name? With Clark, Clark did too much damage to the Bronx, you live in Bronx, you understand what I'm talking about. Clark, the thing with Clark is Clark's have the advantage. Because Clark funds every nonprofit, criminal justice related nonprofit. What's up, you know, what's up? Criminal, what's up, Cozy, what's up, what's up? Clark funds every criminal justice related nonprofit that know that. It's gonna get into office, that will get her re-elected and elected, especially the Urban Justice Center. Now with Cohen, I never met Cohen, I, I can't hate someone I don't know. I'm telling people right now, I cannot hate someone I don't know, I cannot go hard against somebody that I don't know. But Cohen is a little further left from Clark, right? She's way further left than, her name is Tess Cohen, she lives in, um, she lives in South Bronx. She's way further left than Clark would ever be. If you wanna compare it, Clark is like more moderate to her far left, not far left, but Clark is more moderate to Tess's left. That's the issue. Now with, uh, with Clark, with Cohen, Cohen attended a few of those closed Rikers rallies, right? Those, so Tess, you know, closed Rikers is, is ran by the Freedom Agenda. The Freedom Agenda is a arm of, under the umbrella of the Urban Justice Center. Clark funds the Urban Justice Center, she funds that shit, she funds the Urban Justice Center, she funds it. Now, what happens is Clark funds a nonprofit, the nonprofit will stay off from endorsing or helping out Cohen. Helping her out, running for six, running for Bronx DA. I'll vote for Cohen, if I live in Bronx, I'll vote for Cohen because I wouldn't vote for Clark. And I'll tell people, vote for Cohen because you shouldn't vote for Clark. I think that Cohen will win North Bronx, Cohen will do well in North Bronx. Especially in the Dino Wits areas because Cohen is Jewish, Cohen has the Jewish last name. And Cohen's a Jewish, so people that are Jewish will see Cohen on a ballot and they'll vote for Cohen. That's a fact. I know on YouTube discount will get, this, this video might get flagged because I said the word Jewish, so I understand that, it might get flagged, it might get, uh, it might get, uh, it might get, it might get, um. Uh, what is it, um, flagged or like acronymed because I said the word Jewish. But I don't hate Jewish people, just bring my heads up. I love my Jewish people. Andrew Adrian, hashtag Andrew, I said that in the, Andrew, hashtag Andrew Adrian. But with, well, her name, like I said, Cohen, she has an issue because all the nonprofits that, uh, all the nonprofits that. All the nonprofits that, um, she might want support, Co- uh, Clark funded. So that's the thing, guys, the thing about, uh, Cohen, you know, she's, I think she's a good person. But I think she ran, she ran a little too late. And, you know, she, she going against the biggest opportunists in Brook, in, uh, in the Bronx, Darsha Clark, I wouldn't vote for that girl. I wouldn't vote for her, I'll tell people vote fucking Cohen. Even if Cohen get like twenty five percent of the vote, I'll fucking vote, I'll, I'll, I would have knocked on doors for her. But I'm so busy helping this girl out, this girl right here, um, Jamila, I want her to win, I want Jamila to win her city council seat. This female right, um, girl right here, I mean, woman, woman right here, woman, woman right here, Jamila, win. I can't go any, I can't go everywhere and help, help people out, I wish I could, I wanna help Jamila win. Cause I know she will win, I believe she will win, I believe Jamila will win the pro race. Now going forward to the Bronx, I'll tell, go vote for Cohen. We're going to Brooklyn, I mean, going to, going to Queens. Now Queens, we got Grasso, we got Cats. Um, I support, I'll tell people this. Vote for Cats or vote for Grasso? Grasso was a great guy, I think Grasso, Grasso, I'm gonna tell you about Grasso, I'm gonna put Grasso on the great, in a great, what's up, Michael Clayton, what's up? What's up, thanks for joining, brother, I appreciate you joining, join my live. Grasso, I met Grasso a few times, me and Grasso are good people. Grasso, I love his energy, Grasso running, Grasso. Grasso, I love his energy. Grasso running, Grasso has the energy like he wanna win. He has the, I want to win energy. Uh, he has the, I want to take the fucking girls, take Katz jobs energy. And I love it from the guy. I couldn't stand next to this guy, cuz I wanted to piss off Katz. I told him, I told people, I said, I can't stand next to this guy publicly, because I don't wanna piss off Melinda Katz. Cuz I like Melinda, I love Melinda. Melinda, Melinda Katz is a, was a former legislator. She was in the city council, and she was in the, she was the Queens Board President at one point. So she wasn't, she was in a legislator. Now, when come to bare reform, she'll tell you, just like my man will tell you, like, well, that's a state matter. You have to go to Albany for bare reform and clean slate and raise the age and all this stuff like that. You have to go to Albany and get these bills, um, changed. You have to run, I'm gonna tell people right, you have to run for state assembly and state senate, or run people for state senate and state assembly and get these guys and gals in, and get this stuff propelled. And get this stuff reformed. That's the fucking point, but you can't, um, one second, you good, pause. Sorry, guys, I was talking to, uh, another worker for this, for Jamila's campaign. So I'm walking now, like I said, um, I say like, Katz, you gotta go to state, state senate, uh, state assembly and start running people with these seats. And this is how you win, this is how you win these races, guys. This is the facts. You know what I mean? I, I think I'll tell you, this is how you win these, these races for city, for, uh, for state. You gotta go, you can't, you can't, you can't propel bare reform in city council. And I'm gonna tell, I'm gonna explain about now what happened with city councils and stuff like that. Now, the point of a city council, it's like a lot of seats. The city council, what you supposed to do is you, you decide on zoning changes, you decide on, like, how, it's a lot of things, maybe with zoning. It's mostly about like land developments. That's city council, majority of time, you're really gonna, if you really wanna change, like, save, like, save districts from, like, rezoning, run for city council. That's why I tell them, run for city council. Now, if, like, you wanna change your street light, or change your street sign, or, um, you know, whatever, right? If you, you wanna go to Albany, run for city council. If you wanna propel bare reform, if you wanna propel, raise the age, if you wanna stop and repel, um, clean slate, go run for state office, state assembly, state senate, go for governor, go for AG, that's what you do. But don't, you cannot, only thing you can do with city council is have a bully pulpit. And say, well, if you don't do them, I'mma, I'mma fuck with them, book your ass out. That's all you can do for city council. But other than that, is what you know you can, what you do. I'm sorry, guys. It's just what it is. It's just what it is. That's all you can do. But that's the facts. That's the real facts, guys. That's the fact. You know? So, going forward, going forward, going real forward, I'm just walking around, jumping some stairs like that. Going forward, going real forward, uh, with Queens, and I'm gonna tell people right now, do not vote for Devian Daniels. Um, do not vote for Devian, because I think Devian is there to split the vote. I think she's a spoiler. I think she there to split the vote, and that, that's what I believe she's doing. She's there to split the vote, and, uh, she's there to split the vote, and that's it. She's not there to run because she cares about the, she care about the people. She just there to split it against the constituents, against Katz and, against Grasso, to give a, a, or split against Katz to give a, give a Grasso win. So that's my, that's my advice, do not vote for, do not vote for, um, Devian Daniels. Now, when it comes to the judge races, um, I really don't, it's a lot of judge races all over the city, so I really can't really get my, my true sense on this as much as I can, but I told people, I vote for turquoise. I vote for turquoise. I mean, I vote for turquoise today, so you see, Jamila Rose here, right here. Run for turquoise, Taskin, what's up, man? What's up, what's up?
Man, doing good. He's working for Jamila's whole campaign too. He run for Jamila Rose, wait, wait a minute. He runs for, he's working on C two, so, that's the thing, he's, he's on the campaign too. You got Barron out here, a lot of Barron people out here, they're working. It's like, man, Barron people out here, they working, so, taking my best theory, showing a sign. So with judge races, I'm real careful not to really get, stick my hand to that, stick your hand in my head, cuz it's a lot of, and I'm, I'm gonna explain about judge races, guys, about judge races, how controversial it could come. Judge races can be real, can be real, um, dirty. Judge races can be real dirty, cuz judge races, there's a lot of money on the line with judge races. It's a lot of money on the line with judge races. So you have to be real careful how you, if you wanna jump into those campaigns and help people out, it can get real dirty. And you have to be real careful, uh, when you're helping camp, when you help, when you're jumping to races where, at the same time, you have dirt on you, right? You have dirt, because remember their lawyers. Remember their lawyers. And lawyers could two things do with their, with their bar, with their bar card, right? They can do good for the people, or they could do bad for the people. They could do good for society, or they could do bad for society. They could do it for, they could do things for free, like pro bono, or they make you pay for it. So lawyers have a lot of discretion, so like a doctor have a lot of discretion. Of course, doctors are, doctors have to make dad make money, people are professional licensed, they have a lot of discretion in what they do with their stuff. So you have to be real careful, uh, when you mingle into the judge races, and try to be neutral. Try to, try to give, don't try to hate another pro representative judge because a, a mother, a mother person, one pro representative, you never do that. I, I try my best to. I support it, I support it turquoise, and I support it turquoise, I support it, um, Linda, but I started to vote for turquoise. So other thing people gotta understand about politics, about judge, about judge, judge races. Be careful of how you navigate that, those races, and try to be neutral. Because remember, both of them are lawyers, they're all lawyers, and lawyers could do a lot of damage to somebody they don't like. You have to be real careful. That's my advice. That is my advice to you guys, and that's the thing. But other than that, about to log off right now, just been out here for a long time with you guys, and it's time that we go vote. Make sure you vote. Voting's until nine o'clock tonight, nine PM, it's currently eleven fifty-eight right now. So make sure you guys go out and vote, please. Alright, if you guys don't vote, if you don't vote, your voice don't count. Your voice do not count at all. So shout out DJ, step over, we watching about Jennifer Gutierrez. And, um, you know, support Jennifer. I support Jennifer. Oh, back to this, uh, twenty twenty-six race, totally forgot, I'm about to forget twenty-six. It ain't me. Twenty-six. Ju, the ju, the, the District Twenty-six race, I'm so forgot. Julie Wan versus Haley Kim. Now, I'll say this right now about that. I'll co-sign Julie Wan, I love Julie, I love Julie. At least Julie is trying to defend herself for dear life about her vote for the budget. You know, it's kinda messed up, she messed up on that pledge with the ALC, um, ALC curse to change pledge. But she, you know, she's defending herself, and I, and I, I respect that. But it's fucked up that she voted on the bill like that, she shouldn't have voted on the bill. I mean, she should never did it, because look what the heat she's getting from the constituents, from the progressive people. That's the thing. So you gotta be, you gotta be real, you should be real careful about that. You gotta be real careful. Real careful. You know what I'm saying? But she should have, she should have never voted no for that. That's why I think what, that's the thing about, uh, my thing with, with Haley, with, uh, Julie Wan. Well, I have an issue with Haley, and it's what it is. And the twenty-two race, whatever, you know what I mean? It's about to log off. Peace out, guys. Take care.